We will call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three with staff and plenplegits.
Good night, the United States of America, and to the privileged states, one nation on earth, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special recognitions or presentations tonight, delegations, do we have any delegation forms?
No.
No delegation forms brings us down to superintendent's update, Mr. Stafford.
Sure, Mr. President, we have, first on the list, we had completed school surveys. There was a survey, a student survey, and a staff survey. They've been completed and the information has been compiled. Federal programs actually was the one that initiated and got those put out for us to all the schools. And Lola, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about what the process is and why we have these large binders of all the surveys.
Sure. Actually, each school would have its own binder coordinator, and so that was either the administrator or a designated staff member to do that. We did it as passive-aggressive, aggressive, passive consent forms for permission because you had to have permission for the students to be able to participate. We completed the survey November the seventh through the tenth. Obviously, there were two days, but we were running out of time when the window was open. So we had to guarantee that the conditions ensured privacy and confidentiality for the students taking that. They had to feel comfortable taking it as well. So in your binder also, at the front of the section for the school, you will see a form that tells how each school notified their students when they sent out those consent forms, how they notified the parents, and how they notified the staff. So you have that for each school. Each school has a different system of doing that. Then each school also receives specific codes for their school. It was all an online survey. So their school's, or the student survey had one specific code to go online. The parents had a different code and the staff had a different code. That's how they got their results. And to maintain confidentiality, you had to have at least ten responses in order to get a report. And so that's why you'll see that some don't have reports because there weren't the responses needed or the number of responses needed. The next survey that we anticipate, they anticipated this being from mid-figure to early commit April. I don't have those states yet as well. But what you have in the binder are the results from each school. And they also, the student report has two different types of reports. One is just the general straight one where they just question by question. And then the other one is the student domain report, which kind of logs it, the questions into like topics so that you can see overall like how they perform across the questions.
There's also a state, you'll see where the state statewide number, you'll see that percentage, to give you an idea.
There were two surveys, ones grades three to five, and then one for middle and high school for the student ones. And so the results, you'll see their school results, you'll see the county. So the elementary will only be compared to the elementary at our county level and at the state level. And then the middle school and high school will be compared to the same with that as well.
So then what are you doing from here?
What are we doing from here? The schools are analyzing the results. We already knew that. And then we are also including that, it will be included in their strategic plan as a part of their needs assessment. And then we'll, at the county level, also look at our many results as a part of our strategic planning process, to what we need to support our students with that.
We're just now beginning to work on our strategic plan and the steps here to county level, the data process. I think you've had one, we've had one meeting so far, but those start about right now with everything else.
We were just compiling these. We weren't ready to have that. So we'll be looking at that the next week.
There's nothing that sent us these results that were electronics that you could just kind of see them.
We had to collect them from every individual school. They, I inquired if we could get it from the county like this, and if they may know we had to get them from each school.
But they can actually get you county results.
County results are in those reports.
They can get you the county results, but they can't get you a combined county.
We figured we could get that just as a, instead of.
Like they could send them all to me directly?
Right. Interesting, but we'll do that second survey. We're trying to look at the window in the spring because you don't want to go into testing, but you don't want to do it so early after this one. So we'll look at that when they give us that final window on, when the best time would be to do that, see how that is. Anyway, facilities, we actually have a line item, if you'll look down on the agenda, talking about properties. I don't think we have a lot of updates for facilities for Mr. Lopez.
Really do not. The only probably thing of any consideration would be the Abson building, and it's still in process with the organization that is considering using that facility. So they had a board meeting, got canceled. They didn't have a forum. So their meeting, I believe, the thirty first, and they said they should have some more information for us then. But it looks very promising. It's already checked out well with whoever checks out three K in the state level, and then also the health department, fire marshal, where everything's checked out. So we've gotten through several of those. It's just a matter of the board, if they have a desire to use that facility. That's really the main. Everything else is kind of status quo moving forward to get contracts signed for some of these new projects that's happening since. But everything is moving along smoothly.
We did just sign the contracts for the Simpson project. So those are all coming in. The other thing, but just to give you an update, the budget process for this school year, we're going into the personnel season as well, you know, those numbers. But we'll sit down and set those dates, and I'll provide you those when we're meeting to start with the departments on the budget for this upcoming year. All right. And that will involve Mr. Lopez with facilities maintenance.
Joey brought up a good point at our last principal meeting. We're going to try to go out and meet with each individual school with their facility needs, you know, from that perspective, so that we can narrow down what is truly, and Tom and Doug realize is what's an actual work order or what's an actual budget. And work with them on that to try to kind of narrow down the focus of our needs in our schools and taking a look at their money, county money, and see what, see what needs to be. And that will be a big help having Joey go out with us on that.
The wish list.
Wish list.
And that process has been done so differently.
And the wish list really, for principals and newer principals, sometimes they're just not sure where to put, whether this is the work order, I want to get my building painted, I need this done, and what actually is a larger budget item that county would need to help kicking in. So we want to try to help that process along so that we sit down, we actually look at those items, we're familiar with them, we understand, we know what, if there's going to be spending money in the school and the county budget, and just have a better idea. I think it will help both the schools and us.
The facilities piece too, I had a conversation with Jason about the safe schools entry ways and the schools that we have not done yet. So you'll be seeing information on those and the priority for where we want to go to finish. So we're in a good place with those. We just need to get them finished, for sure. The only other thing I have for superintendent's update is Mr. Hogue attended the UTC meeting Friday before.
Yeah. It wasn't a long meeting. Yeah, but he went over the projects that they got going on right now, trying to get finished. We're putting out a new canopy out over the front. We're getting everything to finish up, doing the blacktop at the back of the building where all the water kind of runs down in and sets. They've got that all situated, I guess, ready to go. They got the counting, and I guess they had like fifty-some doors on the career center. And they went along to see if there was some they could eliminate. I think he came up with about eight doors that they could eliminate. No function. And in place of the door, we're going to enclose it in this bulletproof glass and everything. So just put like a fake, you know, just a small, big piece of glass there. And overall, eat it right now. So personnel moves or anything like that. Enrollment is still up. Last it's been in years, and they're really pleased with that. They never lost it, just two or three kids, I guess, at the end of the semester. And other than that.
They're doing some school tours. They're opening up. I think Lincoln is going to be there, some of our middle schools.
Right. They're going to go out to all the schools, Mr. Paul's going out, and they're going to visit all the middle schools and the high schools and try to reach more kids to, you know, to enroll there in the fall, you know, get a jumpstart. There was talk about, is there any way that they can involve the freshmen and the sophomores? And they're looking into that to see if they can figure out a way to take and go ahead and be there. The biggest problem is they'll not be able to get, they don't think they'll be able to get all of their credits that they got to have for graduation. And we're going to look and see what they can do and maybe, you know, get, get some more kids, you know, their kids, get them started in that, in the programs. And they're going to host, again, this year they're going to host the big state, you know. Competition that they have. They're going to host it again. I guess it worked out very well last year, and everybody enjoyed coming there for that and all. So, yeah, whole things, you know, that they got going on and trying to keep it, you know, want to try and get more. His concern is the, the adult programs and something about whatever they got to get done through the finance department. I know Joey's aware of it, and because they have to get it in by a certain time so that they'll still be able to get their money that funds the adult programs, gives them free tuition.
Something that has to be done.
Yeah, it has to be done. I don't remember the exact date.
March fifteenth, I believe.
Okay, okay. And so anyway, it's putting Joey under the gun and putting them under the gun to get all this stuff together because then it has to go into the auditor and they have to approve everything. And continue to come out. So that's pretty much everything that, that I can remember on this bring of mine that went on that day. She wasn't able to be there, so I tried to take notes as they talked and give them, pass them off to her. So anyway, that's it on the career center.
Thank you, Mr. Hogue. I do not have anything else.
This is down to approval consent items. Is there a motion?
I made a motion, except the second items.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Authorization for payment for private school employees with federal funds. Think there's only one on there. Correct?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion for the authorization of private school employees.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Out of state travel study request. And if you seen on there, there was finally something I've been asking for for years is a trip to Washington DC, which never happened. So because of that, the chair will make the motion on this. So I'll make the motion to approve the out of state travel study request, and hopefully we'll see more of those.
Maybe we'll have them report after their trip.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just hope they follow the rest of the lines.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Draft school calendar A and draft school calendar B. We'll take those, I guess, together. They're under C and D, but there are two proposed calendars.
On that.
Well, we need just, and he's not here to kind of give us an overview of the difference in the two, to make sure that these align with the ones that we looked at last time, correct?
What I can tell the difference is making those three OS days during spring break or at the end of the year.
That was the only.
That's the only year.
That's the only difference. And the four days at the beginning, the calendar was exactly the same except for that.
Yeah. And both of these calendars are the same except for those two.
Okay. So we just need to decide where the OS days go at the beginning, or at the spring break or at the end, correct?
Correct.
Is there a preference in, in one of these? Yeah, I can live with it either way. So.
I would think, you know, obviously depending on everyone, but these three during spring break, would that not go away? Those three days would go away if you have snow days? So I'm thinking in terms of, of parents and obviously employees would rather have those three days at the end of the calendar than right there and still be guaranteed that week off.
They'd want to do something.
Especially if they planned something.
If you want to plan.
So if you put them at the end, they could be a moot point anyway, is what you're saying.
Yeah. Or if you did have to, then just don't plan your vacation until June third or whatever.
And I agree with that. Which one is that?
Plan B.
So it'd be calendar B proposal. Okay, with that then, I guess since we have C and D.
Is there other discussion?
Well, if someone wants to make a motion to move one of these two, then we'll have discussion. Okay, so, but, but that's, I mean, I don't want to move A and then vote it up or down, B, vote it up or down, just move one of them, and then we can have discussion on that.
I'm making a motion that we accept B.
Is there a sec?
That's the one.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So any discussion on, this is for draft school calendar B, which if we were to approve that would make A a moot point. Yeah, so.
Is that, okay, is that the, okay, that means school sort of the same time, same day?
Twenty-first for students.
And then getting same.
Or wouldn't end the same.
Other than the OS days.
Other than the OS days.
The OS day.
Yeah, the last day for, on the, one with the, you know, is in spring break is like the thirty-first. It just pushes three days into June.
Which would go away if we don't have the snow.
But they're unprotected days during the spring break. There's.
Right.
You're.
These days are protected or.
If they want to schedule that week off.
Yeah.
Difficult.
Frank, do you have any discussion on this?
No, I agree with the B, with taking the OS days in. That way they're not there because there's their watch. But it's.
I think it gives more flexibility and that.
Yeah.
Well, more certainty.
Yeah.
In making plans for parents and students.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I have just a question here, one question in particular. I had a couple calls on it about the fact that the two days at the beginning of this, that they have had instead of the one. And I'm just wondering if we get very much as far as public comment on wanting the two instead of the one. And the public comment could be obviously from teachers or principals or whatever, right?
I've gotten some from teachers saying they like the two. They just like the two days to begin the second semester, but that's, that's from teachers.
Yeah, that's what I had too. And I just wondered if.
They definitely appreciated the one. And this year with having two, they were able to do, I mean, we did a lot of trainings and, because we hadn't had time to do professional development. And they said it really went into a smooth second semester by having the two because they could get the trainings done and be prepared. But they really appreciate the one.
What is, what does the, what problem does this cause getting grades ready if one compared to the two? Or was that even part of the equation that they needed the second one to help get grades? Because on the twenty-second is the last.
Yeah, the grades are already finalized. The semester's finished. So coming into that second semester was really just a prep time and professional development time, the two days.
So the grades are done. So the grades would be done by the twenty-second.
People are ending the semester in, before Christmas.
Right.
So those grades, they're already finalized and.
They wouldn't have to do any grades while they're raw.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Ending the semester before the break. So, I've heard those. They do really appreciate the one day. They didn't have that for a long time, for sure. I haven't heard of it a lot.
I mean, either one way, it's been very.
Yeah, right. And I did get most, just thank yous for allowing us to have the days, for sure.
You just try to get calendar as close to.
Oh, yeah.
Make it as many people, you're never going to make any.
I'm just happy it's a little more balanced now.
Yeah, yeah. So I like the calendar.
Especially the high school kids in their poor classes.
I just think they'd like that B, I would think.
I mean, the only change with if you had that second day back in there in January was just to have tack another one at the end.
I think it's a good balance.
So, like I said, they really do appreciate the one day. They never had that for a long time.
So we're going with one of the two.
It's that calendar B has one, so.
No calendar A had one.
Yeah, reduced.
Okay. Any other discussions?
Also, one of the counties, we picked, I know the two counties, Dogbridge and Taylor, Taylor especially, kind of waiting to see what we do because then they'll work on their calendars. I know Taylor County, she said she probably wouldn't get hers done till March, but she waited, you know.
Yeah, ours is early this year.
Yeah, well, and that's what I said, well, we're going to try and get ours early than whatever you all do because they have to build a calendar for Career Center.
And I think we're better off going ours early because of that, then they can go on ours, rather, because there have been times in the past where they've completed theirs, and then we've done ours after the fact. And we're the largest, I mean, we own the building, we're the largest supplier of students there, we're footing most of the bill, and we're trying, they were trying to hold us to their calendar. We should, it should be, our calendar should be the master calendar.
I was going to be kind and say, I think we can have more focus there.
Yeah.
The Career Center for years just usually adopted ours and tried to do that. But now the state's requiring them to submit a calendar to be approved by the state board as well.
Yeah.
So that was new for them.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. County office work survey, and I asked this to be put on. I know there have been some discussions last time, just kind of offhand discussion. And, and then there's, there were some back and forth about it. So I just wanted to make sure that, that we were all on the same page. So if there's a motion to get it up there for discussion, I do have some, some issues to discuss with it. So I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, I don't know if you want me to go now or after you.
And I can, you can go and, yeah, because I have some thoughts.
From the conversation, from the referencing that you referenced discussion, I contacted Jamie Brown at the School Board Association just to make sure that we weren't doing anything improper or unethical. And in his letter, he said, seeking assistance in assessing concerns with the culture and possible contributing factors to recent turnover with the school and county office leadership for your district, he presented a name and a service that actually does third-party surveys. So basically what he said was that retention of our best and brightest leaders is critical to the success of our schools and mostly important to our students. Then he went on to say that this type of work, meaning a third-party survey company requires a specific skill set, persons who have the ability to maintain high degree of confidentiality, as well as an unbiased approach. So with that, I went ahead and actually went to the Edwards Service, Edwards Educational Service, and spoke with Mr. Edwards, and he provided information in regards to what services he would provide, what his company would provide, gave you a little bit of background information in regards to his background and stuff that he has done in the past, and a little bit about the Edwards Educational Service also. I did include in there a list, what I thought to be a compiled list of either resignations, retirements, or transfers that I thought, I'm not saying it's completely accurate, approximately thirty-eight to thirty-nine individuals in the past year and a half or so, that has like resigned and gone to other places, not just out, not in Harrison County schools, but not just necessarily in education either. So he felt that that would be beneficial for him. So that's just what I have put together in that little.
Well, you know, one, the gentleman, one gentleman you spoke to that does the survey or builds.
Mr. Edwards?
Yeah. I'm sure there's a cost to that.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay.
It's in there. And he said it would all depend, he would come and meet with us, and it would be all depend on what exactly we wanted him to do, and how much time he wanted to be placed into the survey as to what the broad spectrum would be. He said it would be probably three to five weeks turnaround from start to finish, from after meeting with us to develop, see what we want developed in regards to the survey, and then also to the final, to determine what next steps they would suggest. So it would all depend.
Well, you know, I've always looked at surveys, and you're all kind of want to take a survey with something, you know, whatever you go. And I think a lot of times you don't get true honesty. I think you get, you know, because people sometimes say, well, if I don't answer this right, say that they're going to leave Harrison County. But then they may want to try and come back to Harrison County. So if they answer one way, they never have an opportunity to maybe get re-employed within the county. I think a lot of times people are intimidated by these surveys and want answers, you know, behind this thing. And so I thought rather than taking the survey like that end is when somebody leaves this county, which we've had suddenly even go to other places, they do a, the superintendent and Hershaw do an exit survey. Okay. And to me, I think you get more of an honest answer from them as to why they're leaving. They're leaving either for more money, they're leaving for. they're leaving for, you know, a better position than what they they hold right now within Harrison County. Maybe it's closer to home. Some people that I know left because it was closer to home and traveled down to them. So I think rather than do a survey on one end, and I think it'd be better to as they leave.
Right, which is why I included all those individuals.
Right.
Which he actually said that that would be included in part of his survey, where he would actually send the survey or with a cover letter from him being a third-party entity, not affiliated with Harrison County Schools, not affiliated with anyone in Harrison County. He actually told me he didn't know anybody in Harrison County, actually. So he would actually go through these and actually send the survey or even do interviews with those individuals, which is why I compiled that list.
And I guess my thoughts, I'm I'm not for the survey, and my reasoning is very reasoning, and one is I don't think teachers like to be micromanaged by their principals. Principals don't want to be micromanaged by this central office, and nobody wants to be micromanaged elected officials. And to that point, I understand where everyone comes from, why you want that, but the superintendent runs the staff, that's her staff. And I don't think, I think exit interviews, I'm a hundred percent for. That's the industry standard, is to do exit interviews. When you do, if, when you do a survey of staff, you're gonna get varied parts of people complaining, or they're gonna say what you think you need to say, but the the other portion of it too, if you go to your staff and you survey them and ask what they need, and they say we need X, Y, and Z, and the next one says that, and it all says that, and we're not willing to sit here and say, okay, we're gonna fix that and and take care of X, Y, and Z, then we've, we've surveyed our staff, and now we've got a morale problem because we asked them what they wanted, they told us, and we didn't do anything about it. So for those reasons, I'm not for it. I'm gonna leave it up to the superintendent, it's her staff, and and I think that interviews are proffer, and and even, even if she does the exit interviews and wants to share it with the board, I'm okay with that, but I don't, I'm not, and I'm certainly not for going to an outside agency and and spending fifteen to twenty thousand dollars as estimated here when you don't know that you're going to get that much value back. You don't know how many are going to even respond to it, because, you know, you can't force them to respond. So what if you spend twenty thousand, you get five responses back, it's really gonna look bad. So I mean, for those reasons, I'm not for it. I I I just don't like, I just and very cognizant of trying to make sure that we as a board don't micromanage. Now, there may be other thoughts among the board, and that's fine. That's just my personal opinion of of how I'm gonna vote on on the issue, and that's why I ask it to be thrown on. So you know, that decision could be made by us to to either move forward with it or leave it to the superintendent's discretion. That's that due to leave it.
Do we still have the survey? I remember we did this at our, our individual schools. They actually did a survey through the teachers on the principal, or we still do that?
I think those are these, Tom.
Well, I.
Where they actually ask the teachers or educators in in relationship to the school and the workplace and the leadership and quality of education and your building, et cetera.
So what's our purpose, what's our purpose of where we've done this over the years? Because I remember we did this years ago. So what's the purpose of it now, this survey?
This was the learning environment survey. So then the schools can actually go and put them in, I believe, your strategic plans, you know, some.
To get an overview.
Doing some evidence from your.
See what your students are studying, your staff's studying, your.
Right.
You know.
But what we haven't had was the service personnel, the administrators actually don't take a survey, and the county office staff does not take a survey. They do not do a survey as to the whole school environment. I mean, even even Ms. Stutler would take the survey as to how you feel about the county and how it goes. I just think it gives us a little insight as to what's happening in our schools and what's happening in our system, and other than just blaming it on COVID all the time. I I don't think.
I think, I think now we've headed down, I don't think that's what what we were talking about before. I think this started as a conversation of why are people in the central office leaving for whatever reason, and that's what the survey was for. That's, I didn't look at it as another I mean, was what you talked about with him within the central office, or was it another?
No, a whole, like a school.
But I mean.
We, you hit this, I would consider that an educational survey about the education and learning in our schools. Okay, what we don't have is an operational survey. How is the school system actually operating in regards to like a real business world in the real business?
I mean, what I'm, I I hope you follow what I'm saying. That wasn't what I thought, because everything you list here are central office folks that have left, so that was, I don't know if that was any other board member thought we were coming into this, and because that's what started the discussion, was that we've had professionals leave for retirement, for other things, and how could we we, you know, better that situation? I didn't think that it was a system-wide, like that we were going out system-wide. It was more, it was approached to us as a, as a central office issue.
No, it would have to go actually to like our administrators and service personnel, now, because take a survey. There's nothing in regards to job environment for them, operations, for them to actually provide feedback to us.
And and the biggest issue I think I have with job environment, there are things that we can control with job environment, obviously, but there's a large number of things that we have no control of that are.
Well, I, I mean, other than salary.
It's kind of unfair that that working conditions and salaries would be lumped into that, and you you could have a very dissatisfied workforce that does a survey and says, we, we really hate working here because of salaries, and that's nothing that we can control.
Exactly, and that's why he said that he would like to meet with the board and discuss issues so he could develop the survey that we want to fit our needs.
And and I understand where you come from, but I'm also a little, what gets me a little apprehensive is a you know, I've lived here entire life, and and there's a local municipality that every six months, I won't name it, but every six months they seem to spend a lot of money on on surveys and and consultant to come in and do things, and there's a stack of them that no one ever followed through. That's my only concern. I just hate to go survey our teachers, our administrators, our staff, and and say, what are your biggest complaints? And then we haven't, we don't have the ability to follow up. I think that creates a bigger issue. They're gonna say, well, why'd you bother, sir? You know, give me a survey.
Without.
Let me, let me make that. Surveys are, are and they're very neat. And sometimes we get feedback that, you know, says there are certain things employees would like to see. There are certain things that staff would like to see, and sometimes we get, you know, the opportunity. And sometimes we don't. So what I will say is, in 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 the world I live in, we've got surveys that come from both sides. So the field and the employees get to serve, get to, you know, put surveys together for for them, and then the 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 administration and our, our senior leadership, we we put surveys out in the field. So it's it's kind of like a back and forth. And the only way that you can really understand what the other parties are thinking is is by getting into their head. So I'm not, I'm not against the survey in in the administration. I think that there can be valuable insights that is brought before us in regards to what types of questions we ask. That's where I think we need to figure out, or in my, in my opinion, we would need to figure out, because these surveys don't have to be long. They don't have to be twenty-page, you know, twenty-page. Just maybe it wants to be twenty questions, right? So my thought would be that if we at least meet this gentleman and 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 at least get a feel for what it is he has to offer, of course, a lot of their concerns cost as well. But if we would, if we would be able to meet with him and determine what it is he has to offer, and if it's in the price range and we can come up with some questions, I I wouldn't be opposed to administrative service. There's a lot of, there's a lot of information we can glean, not whether it's micromanaging, and doesn't have anything to do with micromanaging, doesn't have anything to do with personality conflicts. I mean, there could be a number of things that that we, like Terry said, we can't control. But there's, there's some things we can control, but as a board, we shouldn't, and we shouldn't let the superintendent control. So I don't think, I don't think it's that.
And and I guess, but I'm getting confused too, because like I said, I didn't know until now that we're talking about the entire, you know, the entire school system. It was my understanding, after our discussion last time, is find out why. The only thing that this came from was to find out why we have lost individuals in the central office. That's what it was, it was approached to us. Oh, so you're back to this. If it's the entire school system, I would be more, I would be more inclined to do it if it's the entire school system rather than just the central office. But that's one, but now we're hearing that that's not, so that that's not the same thing that we're asking. I'm I'm just, I'm I'm really confused about, you know, what what the discussion came, it's the last time was about, it started with, you know, we have, we have lost folks in the central office for whatever reason, retirement, moving or whatever, and I thought that that was the focus, but now I'm is that correct? You're, you're talking.
Started, yes. And then after I spoke with Mr. Edwards, okay, he said he would meet with us and do whatever kind of survey that we would want. I'm not, I didn't want to tell him and speak for myself as to what type of survey we wanted. I just said, we've got a lot of things going on, and we'd like to have a survey to figure out what the problem is, if there are any problems, and how we can fix it.
Is this Mr. Edwards including, when he said meet with the president, to meet with our superintendent, our assistant superintendent also?
I don't know. I'm pretty sure he is. He'll be with whoever.
Well, and and the other issue I also have too with this is, is that it's no offense, but we just have a board member that selected someone. I think we have.
No, 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 I did not select.
That's what I'm saying, but.
I did not select him.
There may be ten others, so we have to find, we have to find a mechanism.
He was recommended by the executive director of West Virginia School Board Association, this gentleman and this service.
Right.
He says there, if you look back there, and he says, I've provided his contact information, but please know, there are others out there that. Just fine. I don't have a problem with that. I was just providing a service and example. Somebody was gonna ask, how much does it run? Okay, and and what kind of service does this person provide, or this company or whatever companies provides? This is just the one that the, a West Virginia School Board Association, Mr. Brown, Dr. Brown, the executive director, provided to me. That's the one he provided to me. I'm sure there's others. I don't have a problem with any other one. This is just the one that he gave me. I'm not telling anybody which service to use.
Right. And and, you know, in the back, I also see nine reasons your best employees are quitting, low pay. We can't control that.
No, we can't.
No opportunity to advance. I mean, we really can't control, I mean, they are what they are. We could add additional jobs to advance to, but we don't always do the feeling disrespected. Yeah, that's one that that we could control. Childcare issues, we can't control that. Lack of flexibility is what it is. Poor benefits, we don't control that, the state does. Company culture, yeah, I guess we could do that. Feeling burnout, I I would say that probably, I could say that, I could say that ninety-nine point nine percent of all employees in every job feel burnout and strained relationship with management. Yeah, we could, we could, so, you know, we've narrowed it down to all those reasons. So, I mean, with that, I'm kind of, I'm okay with the survey, but my take is that I would feel more comfortable if Ms. Stutler came and said, we've talked to these companies, we'd like to do a survey, and here's what we would ask. I would just more feel more comfortable if she came to us with a proposal rather than us going out and trying to find it as a board and 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 finding a solution, because you know, ultimately, those are her employees. We only employ one person in this school system, and it's the superintendent. She employs everyone else, and I think if she came back and said, we found three companies, and then we decided I'd be okay with that. But, I mean, as it stands now, I just think, I just think it's kind of a scattergun approach where we're we're forcing it upon the superintendent, where it needs to come from the superintendent to the board, and and if she came with one, I would encourage that, that she, you know, she brought it back and and we have this survey to where she sits down and then we pick the company. That's how I would do it, but as it stands now, with just this kind of a a blank sheet, I'm I'm gonna vote no.
Well, I, I'm not, we're hardly putting anything up right now. We're we're discussing.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It says county office work survey, and it's, it's to go forward with the county office work survey, and I would, I would be inclined to go forward with county office work survey if the superintendent brought us a county office work survey or a company to do that, rather than than voting on it and then tying her hands to then go find it. I think this vote would do that. If if we vote county office work survey, then then we're saying basically go forward and find it, and, you know, it may, it may give us unintended results that may tie us down to finding a company. I don't, I don't know, you know, however, the, of course, it's gonna come with with whoever. I mean, we've made the motion, it's on the floor, and we're in discussion, but that's just to do a county office work survey. I'm still gonna vote no, because I think I don't want to be the one that says, let's do a county office work survey. I think I know the superintendent well enough. If she gets the feeling that we want a county office work survey, she's gonna bring one to us and say, here, you know, I found these companies. So that's just my take.
Well, my heartburn is with everybody's, you know, you're introduced to all kinds of programs in every field, every school, and you get, and they want to, but everybody wants well, I got the solution. I got the silver bullet. And it costs you twenty thousand dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars, or fifty thousand dollars, and, you know, that's taxpayers' money, and, you know, I'd rather take that twenty thousand or thirty or fifty, whatever it comes out to, and put it into programs that will help the kids.
And and I can further say to that, to that point, and and the reason I say that I would rather the superintendent bring to us, it will give her the flexibility. There are, there are different programs at WDU that will do surveys for you for for no cost rather than going and finding one. So that's kind of where I stand of of contact WDU if we want that, some sort of survey, and and they can do that. They they have programs that do that for no cost. They're doing it for several entities right now, and and they don't charge, so. I I'm just saying where I would be if someone brought it. I'm not against it, but I'm against spending the, you know, the money to go.
What is the cost that's in front of me right now?
Twenty thousand.
Depending on services, that's the full package.
Sure. Sure. No, I I think that if if there is a, a viable way to get a survey from WDU, that's, I'm I'm all for it. So, I I mean, I I thought we were talking anywhere between, you know, three and five thousand at most, but no. I mean, that's, that's a lot, twenty thousand.
We get to all real, then, we just don't, we haven't heard.
I didn't want to see a survey.
That's.
But I, at the same time, I think we do need to utilize exit interviews, you know.
That was one of his suggestions also.
Yeah.
Yeah, we utilize exit interviews in my business all the time.
Right.
Most of the time when an employee leaves, they've come and spoken with me, like, I I can tell you to the people in there I had a conversation with, they can tell you why they told me they were leaving. Now, whether that's accurate or not, I don't know, but most of them have had the. Yeah, so on the list that was provided.
Data from the exit interviews that are from the people that have left.
And and sometimes, sometimes, as you know, as a supervisor, I can tell you ones on there that left for other reasons. I mean, when you're in a supervisory position, sometimes people are unhappy, and they can move and find another job. That happens as well if you're making decisions and you're in leadership. So, but most of them that have left were other reasons. They've either retired or left for other jobs, have had conversations with me, and I can tell you that. So we do do exit interviews. I guess they're not officially, I don't call them down and require them to do that. After the last board meeting, when the state was suggested, we did have folks here working on survey questions and was going to do it at no cost, but I understand the the biased feeling or whatever that you may have. I mean, we do have the ability to put out a survey to really anybody we want to. The the results could go wherever they needed to go. I I don't know, but generally, people answer surveys. We've done them with different things. It just depends, and and most of the time you don't get a lot of participation. We've tried even. participation. We've tried even even with these surveys, you'll see.
Well, which is why when I spoke with the um, Mr. Brown at the School Board Association, which is why I asked him, I said, we could do one locally. And and from the county, you know, from the county office, he said, well, most of the time you won't get, you won't get the surveys back because they feel that there's some way, somehow they're going to figure out who it is. And your best part to do it is um, to have a third party, which is why he get presented the name of the Edwards Educational Services. He said they use them in Charleston all the time. They're out of Virginia. Um, and I said, well, okay, well, I'll just call this guy and see what he has to say. Uh, he says, there's plenty of other ones out there. By all means, feel free, he said, but he would suggest going to a third party.
And I guess that's where it gets back. I would suggest that that, I mean, we can, we vote this up or down, whether we're directing uh, this, but then that's still. Someone has to come back and say, here's what we're going going to do because we have, we still would have to expend the money and and whatever. I would just suggest, like I said, I'm going to vote it down and leave it to the superintendent to bring us a, you know, proposal that, hey, I talked to WDU, I've talked to Fairmont State. You know, they'll do the survey for us and and we'll have something. And that's just.
And do you have, as Frankie said, three to five thousand? I mean, I would like to have a cost idea.
They do it for nothing.
Or zero.
I I mean.
Because the cost with the consultant, and we've dealt with them a lot in education, is when they visit, every time they visit, they charge you.
Yeah.
They're going to have conversations with the board. They're going to charge you in their travel and their time. I mean, that's where the expense is.
I mean, I would just suggest to get a hold of of our uh, higher education facilities around here and see if they have someone. You know, it could be Landmark State. It could be any uh, uh, you know, there are several that do that and they look for things like this to do uh, as part of their curriculum. So.
So you're saying you're going to vote, vote it down or you're not going?
I I just want to vote it down and leave it to the superintendent. I'm not going to direct her to uh, to do this. I'm, I want her to bring, she'll bring it back. I, you know, I'm confident that that she can bring us back something and she presents it to us. I just don't want to be top heavy to where we're micromanaging her of saying, and and everyone below of. That's just how I feel. You can vote it up or down however you want. But once, if it's voted up, then, you know, at that point, we're directing her that, you know, she needs to go out there. I just want her to bring it to us. That's, it's it's kind of uh, splitting hairs there, but that's just the way I feel on it is.
You started to say something, but then you kind of ran up top over on that for just a second. Yeah. Yeah. So you started to say something whenever I said to you, what are your thoughts about doing what Gary has mentioned, uh, doing a survey, you spearheading to get get it started or whatever, and that's bringing it to us then. But you started to say something and I think then Mr. Vono started talking at the same time we got.
Yeah, I think I just, I think I said what I needed to say earlier. I can't remember. I've been trying to listen to the two. I mean.
So how do you sort of about voting it up or down? Because it basically, if we're going to vote, should we?
There's a motion on the floor as it stands for the county, for a county office work survey.
With no actual description of what that really is.
Exactly. So we can table it. That would be if if we want to, someone makes a motion to table it, then that's going to stay on the table. That's, that's probably the best way to handle it because then it's going to be a tabled item until we bring it off the table.
And it will be re- revisited the next meeting?
It will stay, no, it would stay on tabled items until we bring it off, which means it may be a month from now. She was able to come and say, I found this company, you know, WDU is able to do it. At that point, we bring it off the table. In the meantime, it stays on the table. That way it's still out there.
But we kind of all agree that we need to do a survey.
But I'm not going to vote to direct the survey is my thing. That's just personal opinion. I'm not directing her to do a survey. Uh, so if you want to table it, I'm okay with tableing it. If you want to vote it up or down, then let's vote it up or down. So. Is there a second?
Well, I'll second if that's what we're going to continue to do until.
And I can bring back information from other, I I can check with WDU and our local universities to see and check for costs.
Did you maybe check also with some of the bigger superintendents in some of the bigger counties? See how they have that situation?
If they've done something.
I just, I just want a lot of information back and I.
I I'm actually in a meeting with the superintendents on Friday. He's bringing us to Charleston, so I can actually put it in front of them. To see what what's done.
See how it ends.
Yeah.
Whether it's been done. A motion to table and a second which would supersede the original motion and second, uh, any discussion on the motion to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, moves this down to.
There you go, Frankie. That was the best comment.
Hold up just a second. We'll get the computer going back.
Policy updates. It moves us down to policy updates. We have like three policy updates. Are these uh, you have someone to speak on these?
She actually was supposed to be here. She's all sick. I can talk about the wellness policy. We added the water bottles that was required from in state policy that we addressed that in our school. Our local policy. So that was what was added there. Um, the.
Is that Mrs. Parker or or she here for that?
Well, she could speak to the water bottles. It was pretty simple, correct?
Yeah, it was pretty simple. And it's just, so we're in line with state. It goes that we added a twelve water filling station policy to it. So we just looked around other counties, had a wellness committee and made the regulations to the policy committee.
So you said filling station. Are we talking in each of the schools or something?
Yeah. So each of our county schools have at least one water bottle filling station. So we added the policy to it.
I believe in new buildings will be a requirement to say, and water bottle filling station.
It's how long a county member that we used to have a policy each couldn't carry water bottles.
Yeah.
The um, the grace policy was the committee requested they be letter grades instead of number percentages. And that the exams they, as a committee, wanted to keep those at ten percent. I know that's been some discussion.
I, can I speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I had popped in that day that they were there because I was checking on Victoria. But I popped in and for whatever reason, they were on this policy and most of the comments regarding the policy was, um, they didn't want to make the final exam grade more than ten percent because of the potential for student failure. Um, I I had a little problem with that. And so I I came to the meeting tonight to to um, actually address that to me because I couldn't imagine how ten percent or twenty-five percent could actually um, affect a grade. So I went ahead and I did some math. Um, okay. Let's see, have something in front of me. Um, as it stands, it's a high school level when you have, if you look at like student number one. Um, student number one with a ten percent um, exam grade. Um, with three Ds and an F on the exam is a D. With three Ds and an F on the exam, that's twenty-five percent, it's still a D. So the student could just blow off the exam and not even worry about even taking the exam at that point because it doesn't really matter. Um, student number two, scenario number two, is if they have two Fs and a D. Well, two Fs and a D without the exam is an F. All right. So if you take two Fs and a D and they blow off the exam and make an F at ten percent, it's still an F for the semester. If they take it for twenty-five percent, it's still an F for the semester. So it really doesn't change anything. It doesn't fail anybody because it's still the same grade with or without taking the exam. All right. However, uh, you look at number three and number four. If a student has two Fs and a D without the exam, it's an F. So they're here, they had a good attendance and they don't have to take the exam. It's an F. All right. If they take, if their attendance is poor and they have to take the exam at ten percent, okay, it's still an F. However, if they take the exam and get a D twenty-five percent, they end up actually passing the class at twenty-five percent on the exam. So there's an advantage for that student to actually do better. With student number four, same thing. A D and two Fs is an F if without the exam. If they take the exam for ten percent and get a D, it's still an F. They actually need a C on the exam to pull out at ten percent. If they took the exam at uh, at twenty-five percent and got a D, they would actually pass the course with a D. So it's to their advantage to have the twenty-five percent exams weight. Now, the only, um, so now we go to the upper, upper end of the spectrum and you've got three As. Or if you want to call three As. So you have three As, obviously is an A without the exam. If you take the exam, you can just blow it off with an F and you can still get an A at ten percent. However, you can't blow off the exam at twenty-five percent. Okay, get it with three As and an F and you actually get, you actually end up with a lower grade. I, so basically all I'm saying is at ten percent, a student can just show up, put her name, put, put their name on the exam and it means nothing. And the kids know this. They know this from the beginning. When they have three grades, okay, the semester grade, if it's ten percent, they they don't care whether they take the exam or not at ten percent. But at least at twenty-five percent, okay, they could do better. They could improve their score. They could actually pull out the class. Okay, um, the other, the other thing being, um, an A and two Bs. An A and two Bs without the exam is a B. Okay, if the student would opt to take the exam at ten percent, they would still get a B. If they got an A on the exam, they still got a B. If they get an F on the exam, they still have a B. An A and two Bs, okay, at twenty-five, if they make an A on the exam, they get an A for the semester. If they make an F on the exam, if they fail the exam, just blow it off, it's still a B at twenty-five percent. So it doesn't really change whether it's ten percent or twenty-five percent, but the twenty-five percent is more advantageous for the student to excel than it is to worry about whether a student is going to fail because I can't figure out any grade combination where at twenty-five percent, they fail and at ten percent, they don't. So it's more advantageous for the students, okay, to have twenty-five percent worth on their exam weight. The other thing is, it is, I I found a quote that I I found to be apropos for this particular situation. The victim mindset, meaning those students were afraid they're going to fail. The victim mindset dilutes the human potential. By not accepting personal responsibility for our circumstances, we greatly reduce our power to change those circumstances. So by lowering our expectations for our students at a ten percent exam rate, we are not doing them any favors. We are not allowing them to accept their circumstances.
Mr. Hutton, the reason I pointed to you, and I know you remember this, it it just hit home on the student three as I looked at that one. Whenever we started at WI and we sat down and we listened to teachers uh, before school even started that year. This idea right here, the comparison between the ten percent and the twenty-five percent was brought to our attention. And that's, and we adopted that simply because the kids that had the two As and the two Bs, they were fine. But it was the kids that had the two Fs and a D that it really affected more than anybody. And so we adopted, I just, that student three right there. There's the exact, exact example of what you did there.
I mean, we need to try and read them. I mean, you know, you look at, you look at these kids and if they make an F, then another F, and then they make a D, I mean, you, we waited so long, you know, you know, they improved some and then you take the exam, you, and you know, and it depends on what's on the exam. It may be, what was on the first two, six weeks, a lot of it, and they don't pass it. Then it kind of inflates that child, you know, to think, well, I didn't do too good, but I'm trying now. And then they go pull it out. Then you're into the second semester, get the, get the reputation, well, throw their hands, I bet, you know, I I surrender. I, I don't care.
And then we gave them the option. If if you take it and you don't do well on it, then you're just not counted. And that's what we did. And I, that was very, that just, that example right there, three, since I saw that. That's why I pointed at you, Doug.
Well, those first ones, I said, was you, that was me when I was two Ds and all that.
How many were on the committee?
She had twenty-one on her list. I'm not sure.
Twenty-one that day. There's probably thirty on that.
Did they vote on this?
Yes.
Was it overwhelming?
Yes.
Yeah.
They said was because by making the exam twenty-five percent, students would fail and they're worried about student failure. I could not come up with a letter grade combination to validate that response.
I was going to say the prior committee meeting. I think this grading policy, most, some of the comments where it's just been revisited and revisited and revisited, I think they are, the, they came to a consensus and now it's been opened back up again. And it's like the same conversations that were, that they already resolved is happening all over again. So I think that was the frustration. I think that's why they wanted to keep it where it was. That was just comments I've heard.
If I could just.
I mean.
Just, and I, and I validate what you're saying, Frank Francis. I do. I understand that. There's also other considerations of variation of grades. And there's all, and I'll say this, we're talking extracurricular um, uh, activities. And the one thing that we know that is is extremely important is that we need kids involved. If I ever had a kid in the office that, and the one thing that I would talk to the counselors about and also the other assistants, teachers, what is this, where does this child belong? What is his belonging in the school? And a lot of times those kids that I would get, they really didn't have a place. Now, I'm not saying that that is the 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 deal breaker, but there are also kids that the, we call it athletics or extracurricular activities, that would become ineligible. It really does have its purpose for them. Now, I know that's not all. It doesn't fit everything. But there's a lot of different scenarios where I've seen kids lose athletic eligibility. They can't really lose it to the band, right? Can't lose it in the choir. So, but in at those that, you know, that are that are athletes, athletes and they belong to a group, this potentially could harm them. So just in looking at all different variations, I absolutely, I understand where you're coming from. I can understand all sides of it. I do. And I've said that. Um, but the committee kind of, they, they kind of decided that that's the direction they wanted to go in. And, you know, is that kind of what you get a committee? I mean, I'm, I'm open minded about it, but I I think that was their.
Well, I think the main thing that stuck in my head was they said, we're setting students up for failure. In which case then, if you make the grade, if you make the exam twenty-five percent, they're going to fail. Well, I haven't figured out what grade combination they were referring to because it did not add up and the whatever to to that statement. I, that statement was not valid. Now, if they come back with a different reason, that's fine, I guess. I I just don't think, I don't think it's beneficial. It doesn't set the bar for our students, okay? And and where is our expectation?
Right. I struggle with that.
I I tend to lower our expectation because we don't think they can do any better than that. And I don't believe that at all. I do not believe those kids will do as much as you expect them to do. And I don't believe that at all. I do not believe those kids will do as much as you expect them to do. And if we have low expectations, they're going to have low expectations. And if we don't have higher expectations for our kids, okay, then they are not going to have any higher expectations.
I'll date all sides of the argument.
Thank you, Timmy.
Well, I mean, I mean, I see that, but I also see the committee.
But there's got to be a reason, there's got to be a reason why they lost. We, we can't just think about the athlete, okay? I hate to say that. But I'm just saying, that's one aspect, okay? But you also have students who are going after scholarships, who are going after the GPAs and things of that nature, where by taking that exam at 25% can push them up over the, you know, into the next league for, you know, for students, I mean, for scholarships.
It could also draw them back if they.
Well, in that case, maybe you need to have some sort of, of policy where you opt to take the exam. Students who don't have to take the exam, okay, they don't have to take it, but they opt to take it. Okay, if it helps, fine. If it doesn't, no, no harm, no foul, okay? That, that's fine too. But I just don't think 10%, it, it, it just says, it, it, it gets at me that we are, have such low expectations of our students. They can do better. I know they can do better.
One of the things out of the, some of the members of that committee was, you know, even colleges, they don't give comprehensive exams anymore. Which, but it's supposed to be a comprehensive exam, which is 25% of your grade. And so, but even colleges and universities aren't doing that anymore. Their, their grade or their exam, it's kind of their final, you know, unit that they're working in a lot of cases. So, so that, you know, the type of test, and I'm not debating.
But they still, but they still have to take it, a test. You have to take a test to be a lawyer. You have to take a test to be a doctor. You have to take a comprehensive test to be an electrician. You have to take a comprehensive test to be HVAC, HVAC. So at some point, they have to take some sort of comprehensive test to display the mastery of the knowledge that they acquired. Okay, so what are we teaching our kids?
I wasn't on the original committees six or seven years ago. Were you on those when this was discussed? Because when it was, the attendance incentive was taken out, and they had to take exams.
They could not do that.
Right. So, so then it went from 25% to 10% at that time. It was all discussed at that time, and that decision was made. So do you remember, I was not on that committee on why that decision was made at that time?
I think we went to, from letter grades to percentage grades. So if somebody gives a child a zero, you give it a 20 on an exam, you can't come back from that. That's not in those numbers. That's, that was one Dr. Manchin person.
And we went to numbers. Now we're going back to letters. Okay, so maybe we should go back to 25%.
The committee overwhelmed, I mean, they, there was not one, but, I mean, that, it's ultimately the board create policies.
Do you want to, do the last policy, then we'll go back and take each policy individually?
It was just Mr. Kirby changing for homeschool students instead of a date of birth, there's an age in there. But, but on the policy, that's all we had to change. It was a state change for compulsory school age. Right now, it lists the date of birth instead of an age, like a number. That's all he wanted to change on that.
That's all.
Yeah, that was the only change. It was a state recommendation.
Okay, well, let's take the two uncontroverted, first policy, 4406.
Forty-four of six.
The wellness policy, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Tucker. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Revised policy 5505, exemption to compulsory school attendance requirement for homeschool students. Is there a motion? Exactly. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Aye, unanimously. Keep up here. Motion passes and 5502, grading policy. Is there a motion to accept that? Is there a motion to accept or at least get it out on the floor for discussion, for further discussion? Moved, is there a second for discussion purposes? Moved and seconded. Okay, any discussion on? We, yeah, we got it, but I know.
One other point in regard to that is that if we're also thinking about attendance, okay? At 25%, it could help with attendance. Because if you don't miss your five days, then you don't have to take the exam. You can opt to take the exam, I guess.
Frankie, you have any discussion on?
The only thing that I'm, regarding, you know, you've got students that do so well, or they do as hard as they can, and they're still in the middle grade level, middle grade area. And I think changing that exam grade could be detrimental. Some students don't take that as well. So I'm, I'm in favor of the policy out of this.
There was discuss, about, and it is true, I think Mr. Kirby said that, the kids with anxiety taking exams. That was part of it, and it was.
There's kids that have trouble taking exams. There's anxiety that's wrong with it. And I, I mean, I know, Frank, you put together scenarios where it won't affect their grades. I mean, I can't, I don't have the information in front of me to go together, but I don't want to be tanking a student's semester if they're trying as hard as they can.
Well, if they stay in school and they don't miss more than five days, they don't have to take the exam because we don't have mandatory exams.
I understand that, but there, there, the policy that we came up with and approved at our last meeting regarding the attendance, I, I mean, you can get the flu and be out for five days. You can get COVID and be out for five days. And we're, we're not doing any justice by, by saying you have to take these exams at, at 25 or 30%. So the, the other question that I did have was in regard to middle school. The semester grade, and did you overlook the addition to account or not, but middle school and high school, it, it states that for second semester and first semester, some of the assessment will be averaged at 10% of the semester grade with each of the nine weeks graded and weighted at 45%. So, and, and that's middle school. And then 30%, these, yeah, six weeks will be weighted at 30%. So how does that factor into the, how does that factor into the percentage of the exam? Do you take that into account as well?
I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm confused as to what you were asking me.
Okay, so go down to 5502 dot four, 5502 point four, middle school grading, rated six through eight.
Yeah.
It is number five, where it says at middle school level, first semester grade is determined by using the first and second nine week letter grades. For a second semester, some of the assessment will be averaged at 10% of the semester grade with each of the nine weeks grades weighted 45%. Is that how you're calculating it?
I didn't calculate middle school. I didn't calculate middle school. I was more concerned with the high school and transcripts. And actually, you know, because it's part of their permanent record at that point. That's the one that everybody actually sees. I'm not real sure how the algebra, French, and Spanish work at the middle school. I don't know if they're nine weeks. They shouldn't be, I don't think. I think they should be six weeks, like everybody at, like the high school, if they're going to treat it as high school credit. But I, I don't know. I, I was more concerned with actual transcripted grades.
Yeah, I, I just, I feel that we should take the policy out of this.
And, and I, I'm in agreement, and I, I'm like Mr. Lopez. I see all the sides here. And I guess when it comes down to me, I'm the non educator on the, on the panel here. And, you know, we've got a committee and we set up committee and I'd hate to be on a committee that they asked me to do something. And then, I mean, if it was egregious and I, and I knew that it was, that it was a committee packed with, with people that I, you know, that had maybe skeptical, or I was skeptical if their reasoning for being on there would be different. But I think there were good people on the committee, and I'll take the recommendation. So with that, any other discussion? All those in favor on policy 5502, grading policy, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
No.
I'm willing to say no for those folks, Doug, that we did it four years ago. The two As and two Bs was an A. Two Fs and two Ds at that time is an F. With 25% like we did, made it a D and gave those folks a shot, and it's all but done.
Motion passes. Moves us down to personnel matters. There's an agenda addendum as well. Is there a motion on the personnel matters? As presented. A motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hoag, seconded by Mr. DiVano. For the personnel items with the agenda addendum.
But one other thing, I need to recuse myself. Lauren Schoolley.
Okay, noted exception for Mr. Hoag on Lauren Schoolley.
I didn't recognize, that's my name.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Moves us down to property matters. Is that with property matters on the, correct?
Yes.
Under legal and disciplinary matters. So I would entertain a motion under our property exception. So if someone wants to read. It's in front, so if someone, if there's, yes. It, it deals with property matters. So if it's the property motion, the third one. On the paper, on your desk. Or I can do it from the chairs. Take the one taped down. If, if you desire to make the.
I apologize because I'm trying to find it on here. Didn't hear a thing you said.
Yeah. That was busy, they're too busy. You're the one I picked on, so if you'd like to make that motion.
What are we making a motion for?
On the property motion, we have property matter discussion.
Six dash nine eight dash four nine of the West Virginia Code that the board go into executive session to consider matters involving or affecting the purchase, sale, or lease of property in advanced construction planning, investment funds, or other matters involved in commercial competition, which may public might adversely affect the financial or other interest of the Harrison County Department of Education.
Is there a second?
There better be.
My second.
Is, and motion, seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right. I'll, I'll call you on my phone, Frankie.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
We talked too much, so, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you folks for staying. We appreciate it. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
No, I'm done.
I just saw David Vincent, the name is over. Pictures here, we give the job to somebody to get it taken care of, these basketball uniforms and everything. And said he ran the little roadblock. I talked to Danny Dennison and he told me he would send back the guy that came up with it. Yeah, and he said he already had a plan, Danny did, that's how he could do it without.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Two recon peace, break. Go to break.